Oh, uh, okay. All right, moved in second and asked unanimous consent? All right, so let us, actually, let me pause a second. Lisa, our recorder wasn't on. Do we have to do it again?
Just tell them who you are.
I was thinking, yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry, the recorder wasn't on, so we're gonna have to just at least do a roll again, right? Okay. Okay. Would that work, Ms. Susan?
Um, sure, sure.
Okay, could we start with you, Ms. Starr, and we'll go around and just state our names for the record?
Certainly, Star Marsett Anchorage School Board.
Dina Mitchell Anchorage School Board.
Lishen Heldy Anchorage School Board.
Andy Hallman Anchorage School Board.
The Train Assembly.
Felix Rivera Assembly.
Forrest Dunbar Assembly.
Eric Croft Assembly.
Alison Quinn Davidson Assembly.
Pete Peterson Assembly.
Dave Donnelly School Board.
Amy Domboski Assembly.
Yeah, please.
Dina Bishop School District.
Mike Fletchstein School District.
Kathy Monmouth School District.
Red Dice.
John, could you state your name for the record, please?
John Middleton.
Thank you. Well, no, for the record, we already did a call to the order and the flag salute, and we approved the minutes of the joint meeting. That was just before the recorder got turned on, unfortunately. Okay, our first item of business is PEAKS, and do we have a presentation for this?
Ms. Snelling?
Yes.
Great. Ms. Snelling, could you state your name for the record, please?
Yes, um, School Board Member Elisa Snelling joining on the phone. Thank you.
Wonderful, thank you. Okay, so is this you, Dr. Bishop?
Uh, yes, thank you.
Take it away.
It's actually the Anchorage School District, so our school board had requested some updates that are present topics that had been previously shared publicly in our meetings as well, so we wanted to update the assembly in case you hadn't seen them. So, the first one is the state testing, which is the label of the PEAKS. Prior to, it used to be the AMP, prior to that it was the SBA. It is the state-approved assessment that is necessary for ESSA, which is the Federal Education Act. And if a state receives federal funding for schools, they have to give an assessment. This is a summative assessment, which is a one-time only, it doesn't define our kids, however, it is what the state, why, how the state looks at all of their schools and districts. So, I wanted to share, again, just some information on that. It's grade level specific. It's not the only indicator of a student's learning, again, because it is just on a day and a time. So, other assessments that we use are, of course, classroom work, what we observe, grades, and other school district assessments. The grades are three through nine, and grades four, eight, and 10 for science. And in the Anchorage School District alone, twenty-seven, a little over twenty-seven thousand students take the assessment, and it assesses the Alaska standards, which were revised in 2012 and made more rigorous. So, Anchorage School District has Common Core, Alaska standards, are state standards, and with a few minor syntax changes, they're almost the same. In, prior to 2014, when the state adopted, so the state has had their new for four years, Anchorage had adopted the Common Core national standards two years prior to the state, but prior to the state's standards, the state of Alaska did receive a D in their standards, their ask for rigor or their aspirations for children. Presently, we are in the A category, so they have changed. There is more asked of our teachers and our students in our classrooms today than was prior. We just wanted to share some high-level, just, you know, thirty thousand foot, the categories for English Language Arts, which we term ELA, and educators are famous for having etymology, so ELA is English Language Arts. And in grades three through nine, there's sixty-three possible categories that you're rated on, so that's what that sixty-three is. In math, there's only thirty categories that kids are assessed and take an assessment on in the standards.
What does summative mean?
Summative means the end. It's the end, it's a one point in time. When we use, the alternate term is formative, which helps inform your decisions, so it might be a test that a teacher gives weekly, or it might be something, an observation that a teacher does. It's quick, everyday assessments, or maybe monthly assessments, that you use to inform your decisions. This is something out here, like a third-party summative. In the business world, or a driver's license is a summative assessment. It's the end. You either get it or not. Your SAT, what is that? Your bar exam, yeah. So, those are just...
That's a pyramid.
So, that would be in your world, what that would be. So, in our world, in K-12, it is a one-time, a lot of people like to say, because formative assessments, we use to help guide us and see the health of our organization and how kids are learning, they say that summative tests are an autopsy. How did you do what is done? Right? So, whether we like them or not, the fact is, is every school district in Alaska, because Alaska takes federal money, is engaged with the PEAKS assessment. It's part of our job in the, in the business.
If I can interrupt you for a moment, Dr. Bishop, I want to know for the record, we've been joined by Assembly Member Suzanne LaFrance. All right, please continue.
We do want to share, the board wanted to share that, again, it's just one indicator, but from 2017 to 2018, we're orienting ourselves in the right direction. Of sixty-three possible categories, and they have four areas that they label how you do in the content, and one is met state proficiency exceeded, or you were below or far below. And in 2017, we met or exceeded in fourteen of the sixty-three. This past year, we doubled that, we met or exceeded twenty-eight. So, it is our incremental growth. In 2017 in math, we met five out of thirty, and this past year, the second year, which was just last spring, the kids took it, we tripled it in sixteen out of thirty categories.
What does met mean?
Met means that we met or exceeded the passing score or a passing proficiency for the standards, and the people who set the cut scores were teachers from around the state.
We met, fifty percent of our kids did, you did?
I'll share that right next.
Okay.
So, this is the content areas. Next, we have how exactly did the kids do? So, in PEAKS achievement level, kids are chucked off into different levels, whether they're far below, below, proficient, or advanced. And we're getting a little...
Yeah.
Yeah, that's okay, but, so, the student scores for each content area fall into four achievement levels, and in those achievement levels, we increased in twenty of the twenty-eight areas to get, to move kids out of far below and below, and we increased in twenty-two of twenty-eight passing. So, kids in the higher level are moving up, and kids in the lower level are moving up to, we're getting less non-proficient kids.
Fewer.
Fewer. Fewer, yeah. So, I'm a math teacher, sorry. I'm thinking of the artistry. So, essentially, across the state, though, about one-third of our kids are meeting the standards, the recommended standards in English and math, across the state. And a lot of times, we want to say, well, Anchorage is different than everyone else, but sixty-seven schools in Anchorage, or all of our schools, take the assessment, and if you look at NAIVE, it's very similar, and sixty-seven of our hundred schools, our NAIVE category, you know, the fourth grade take, taking it. So, we have seen growth, we're happy about the movement we're making, we're struggling with change, but we are orienting ourselves into improving in our student outcomes. And again, our goal from our board, and they've said it over and over, is not to increase test scores. That's not the goal. The goal is to improve student learning, and we know, we improve student learning, and what happens every day with our teachers in the classrooms, these will take care of themselves, and that's what we're focused on.
Yeah, Ms. LaFrance, any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, just a quick question. Could you say again, Superintendent, how many students in Anchorage don't meet the standard of one-third of students in Alaska don't, and how many is that?
I'll get those, so we'll just call them up right now. Can you look at them, get those, Kathy, and then we'll share. So, we do, we are higher, Anchorage School District is performing better than the mean of students across the state. However, that number is still below fifty percent of the kids meeting proficiency. So, I'll get the exact numbers, we'll just look them up, they're online, so, at the state level, they're published as well. But, just to summary, twenty-seven thousand students took it in 2018, seven grade levels, there's four achievement levels per area, so there's fifty-six total areas, and we improved in forty-two of fifty-six. Again, looking forward, forward-thinking. And I'll just, the second update, we're other just hot topics, and we'd be happy to expound on those, as well as the board at any time. Can I ask a question?
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
What do you attribute, I mean, that's a lot of success, what do you attribute that to?
Just good things happening in classrooms, and a really, a focus on improving pedagogy and supporting kids and teachers.
Has that been the trajectory of prior years, too, or you're just seeing that in the last year?
Well, this is a new state test.
Okay.
So, this is only the second year it's been given, but prior to that, it's hard to compare because there are apples and oranges, but I feel as though we're making progress, so the board knows that.
Then we have a question for Mr. Dyson.
Yeah. I don't want, like you, when it's appropriate in your conversation here, if you feel free to discuss areas where it's maybe gone backwards, or progress is stuck, or if there's a particular segment of the student population that so far, we're not seeing what we want, when it's appropriate here.
Absolutely. Okay. For hot topics, these have been the hot topics on the Anchorage School Board docket, so we'll, we'll share those. The first one is really time, and you have, either in the AVN, on the news, or on social media, heard about the time in schools, what's happening with that, and just want to define time. So, similar to how secondary schools have defined time, they've allocated time, very structured, because we have a bell system in high schools. Kids go to multiple classes, and, and there might be sixty, fifty-five, or maybe eighty minutes, and that's their allocated time. We talked about the time utilized is really per educator, how do I utilize that time? And then really, the time on task speaks to how do kids engage? So, time on task is when we're actually engaged with what we're to be doing. Time utilized is actually the teacher time. The time allocated is the schedule. That has been quite a bit of discussion at our board meetings in regard to, when we adopted a new reading curriculum, the board invested over the last two years of funds to update a curriculum that had been not, our reading curriculum hadn't been updated in ten years, and the standards changed, that rigor. And last year, when we implemented K-2 reading, what we heard at our board meetings was that it's developmentally inappropriate, it's too hard. It's developmentally inappropriate, it's too hard. So, we knew that we had to, you know, put some more supports around understanding that the actual aspirations called for changed, literally. The state of Alaska went from a D in its standards to an A. They changed, and so they pulled the carpet out from under our teachers who are expected to teach, and said, oh, now you gotta do this. Well, those kids were caught in the middle, because if you start early with higher expectations or outcomes, you know, kids will leave those. So, we outlined the reading program, the guide for time allocated for elementary schools, and talking about, you know, if a conceptual understanding, because we don't have bell schedules at elementary school, and so this is a large part of the discussion, so we wanted to share. Lunch recess there is also a large part, the board made some action, I'll talk about that later. The win time is actually called what I need, so that if a student is advanced, they're getting advanced curriculum, because no one will move unless they're learning the next thing that they need to know. So, kids who need reteaching get reteaching, kids who need advancement get advancement during, it's called what I need. And there's just some enrichment acceleration. Sometimes we don't even do reading activities in win time. They'll do others.
Ms. Marsett?
So, I just want to add a little bit of history to this, because I know there's been a lot of talk about academic freedom and that sort of thing, but if you look back, and Eric Croft can certainly attest to this, our curriculum update for reading, I think, is almost thirteen years old instead of ten. And so, our teachers have had a lot of academic freedom because they've had to bring things in that they could use in their classroom, because there was no support for the curriculum that we had before, was too old. So, the curriculum that we bought in, change is not easy when you've been given that much leeway in your classrooms. And I'm not saying that that's a bad thing, but we saw no increase in our proficiency for our achievement gap. Nothing was changing, so we had to do something different, and the board has been very aggressive in asking that the district do something different. So, when you look at the scheduling, I know several of us are already going into the classrooms, and we're not seeing a script being read, or, you know, they're doing things, you know, kids are sitting for ninety minutes. I've been in schools, I know Dina's been in schools, Ms. Heldy's been in the schools, and we're not seeing that. So, because we hear about it so much, we've been spending a lot of time in the classrooms and observing. Change is hard, and I think what we saw last year is those schools that were implementing this with fidelity, there was definitely growth and movement, and so it's just something that we need to continue to do.
And I'll continue, I have some information on reading as well, that I'll pass out to the assembly, so that you can take a look at the research. As the President said, nothing that we're doing is not bound in empirical evidence and interest of anything in education, anything that's been studied, it's how to learn how to read, how to teach someone how to read, all kids, and it, it isn't easy, though. It isn't what we like to do, a lot of times it struggles. If you didn't learn some of the, how to decode, literally decode, you have to learn it as a teacher, and when you have twenty-five kids, sometimes thirty, in front of you, and you're learning something new, it's clunky, and we're, we're building our capacity and competencies to be able to teach reading. I was a professor at UAA, I'm on the Board of Regents, we do not, the university system presently does not teach educators how to teach reading, so we're working on that as well. So, if teachers basically are learning it on their own and taking courses. I'll go ahead and go, and then we'll...
Can I just ask, you said, you know, if they're not proficient, we won't get them, and if they're advanced, we want to keep them advancing, but this measure doesn't have any measurement of or reward for advancing an advanced student. Once they're in that category, you might as well show them a movie, right? It doesn't appear on your measure...
What's, where's that?
On your PEAKS measure, you wanted to improve by increasing the number of students that get into proficient or advanced. Once they're in advanced, them being more advanced is not part of your measurement.
It's not my measurement, it's the state's measurement, and it's just basically saying, where are kids? When they have, on their assessment of the standards, where are they? So, our courses aren't designed around PEAKS. PEAKS, so we do have advanced courses, we have advanced courses in elementary, middle, and high, we have AP classes. We want to continue to engage kids and broaden their horizons as they can.
Yeah, but you're not rewarded in this measurement for doing so.
Correct.
And I'm a, I believe that what you measure ends up being what you emphasize, so that this, this measure doesn't have any reward for continuing to advance an advanced student. They're already in the biggest category.
And, and to your point, you're right, we say we treasure what we measure, and that's why the district, we do our own internal assessments that we use to help guide what's important to us. This is literally a third-party assessment that's saying, okay, we're gonna come in and see how your kids are doing.
Okay, so I want to let you go, because I put on the calendar six and seven, but this is seven. I'm, I'm concerned about what we're treasuring, what we're measuring, and whether we're doing it correctly, and I really don't care that the state or the federal government have mandated a thing. We either, we probably have to do compliance, but if that's not what we want to use as a measure, we shouldn't. And I think eventually, at the state level, but maybe even at the federal, saying, no, we're gonna do something else that makes more sense, can win. You probably would have to do two for a while, but...
We're actually working, I mean, just so you know, with the state and the assessment that our district has adopted and that we use, and that our parents seem to like more, which is the measures of academic progress, because it's immediate, they can see how their kids do against other kids, and they look. The state is looking to remove this test and be able to use the assessment that we already have. It's a process, though.
Whether they are or not, I want you and us to do the things that we feel are appropriate.
Yep, and I'm working with the state, but it's kind of on a side level to help them get in, because there, we have people in the face saying, well, you already invested in this, why would we not? But there's many, many school districts that are using measures of academic progress.
So, Ms. Heldy, and then let's, let's keep moving.
And just to clarify, we do have another assessment that we use, it is a growth measurement that you talked about, the MAPS.
Yes.
At whatever level you're at, you're gonna see, if you not only compare to other people around the country, which is fun as a parent, I'm sure you've seen that before, but you see the growth of that individual child, see that they're continuing to learn and not maximize at some level.
And, and to that point, it's used a ROSH unit, it's a totally separate metric that's used. So, I literally can be a second-grade student, and because the test is dynamic, I'm not giving, I'm given second-grade standards, but I'm also continue to go, and the test changes according to what I answer correctly or incorrectly. I can be a second-grade student at seventh-grade level, and then we know to keep pushing them. So, that is the assessment that we treasure.
Yeah.
And that we measure.
And I was a big pusher of growth over the status...
Correct. And they're, the state, for the federal government, because they want to measure everybody on a grade level, what measure, NWA is the company, and we're working with them to get standards per grade level into, because you have to have a summative on a grade level, as well as a dynamic, and they're working on that. They just, one state tried it out, I believe it's, it's a flyover state, one of those flyers. So, they're, they're the first one that was given permission, and we're gonna try to be the second one at the state level. So, I've been meeting with the commissioner and statisticians, but we're afraid to get ahead of the state legislature on this.
Don't be.
Okay, all right.
Thank you. Mr. Dyson, and then, again, can we, we've got a long agenda here, I'd like us to keep moving forward.
I'll be per.
Thank you.
And so, I wanted to share that there, our President did a great job of saying, there's lots of consternation on this, but to me, I was like trying to figure out, why is this such a big deal? And it's the transparency of it, because ten years ago, I found in a handbook, an elementary handbook, very similar time allotments that we have presently, that were used ten years ago. It just was in a handbook, and we didn't have the expectation, the accountability in the schools. It, it's barely changed. Five minutes is a difference in some of those categories, and, but it is a major issue, but not that big of a change. In a, you know, six and a half, hour, day for kids, five minutes was in one category and not the other. But we're working, because it is, it's, it's difficult, the work, the new reading curriculum is difficult to teach, it's not easy. So, lunch and recess, our board increased by five minutes. Lunch and recess, that was another, we did a study after hearing where we were, what were the data, and we had about sixty percent of schools that had twenty minutes and twenty minutes, so the minimum time allotment is forty-five, and, and that is outside of your transition time. So, we want forty-five minutes for lunch and recess at our schools, and that was an increase done this year. But to let you know, how did we get to the elementary curriculum? Sixty-eight teachers across the district participated. The final was actually a National Geographic, it's called staying age for reading. Again, just to review, K-2 was purchased last year, forty-five this year, and some of what you might hear is priority plans, or what Star Marsett mentioned, as we're told what to do. It's not scripted, it's basically saying what's non-negotiable. If you took the reading program and actually did everything in it, it would take you three hours and fifty minutes a day just to do reading. Well, we have an hour and a half of reading, or two hours, a little over two hours for reading, so, and English and writing and the whole works. So, what the priority plan does is clarify what in the textbook is actually something that the kid needs to know on a standard, so we're matching to make sure we're aligned. It establishes pacing suggestions. One of them is, you know, you don't need to spend any more than ten to fifteen minutes a day on phonics, because that's not something that you use an hour and you learn it, it's a little incremental every day how you learn that. And then ensure the focus, so that we know that what is happening in our classrooms is the focus of the learning. Here's a picture of the book. The major change, so you know, from standards before to standards now, and this was pushed by the community and really the business context of it, is that prior to the change in standards, in the state standards in 2014, national standards in 2012, was that we pretty much only had a requirement for creative writing and novels and traditional novels. The new standards have nonfiction and fiction, creative writing and technical writing. So, a lot of the textbooks you'll see are being engaged, but also having a lot of vocabulary that is technical or nonfiction, not just fiction. And that's a big, major change, probably the biggest change in the curriculum. But this is, you know, it's still active, it's a raw animal, this is, what, first rated? Point or name of the different parts of the animal, you know, say, so it's, it isn't a scripted curriculum. Here's a fifth grade, by fifth grade, again, you see a lot of the science come through in it, but it's tell an original story, engage in conversation, determine importance, and then there's a concept of a food web, so very integrated, it's not a discrete piece, like this is what you do for reading, this is what you do for science, a lot of integration into curriculum. Not, your curriculum is just the what, but the how is the art of teaching. How do we get the work done, and we use measures? We know that teacher-student relationships, if, on the correlative studies, are point seven two. On significance of something, if you have a one equals a one, one-to-one, that's a pretty direct correlation. They've found that anything over four in statistical significance, anything over point four oh is statistically significant, it means that, hey, forty percent of the chance you're gonna get what you want, which is actually high. What is it, in baseball, it's five hundred? That's a good thing, I don't know. But teacher clarity is another, point seven five. Be clear, know what students need to learn, communicate the relevancy to why they're learning it, and then ensure that they understand what the success criteria is. We like to know, what is it that you're asking me to do, and then how are you gonna know when I do it? Other assessments, your bar exam, for instance, you probably know what it is you're expected to know and do on that, and that is similar to our classrooms. Active learning is all about, is, Star Marsett mentioned this, if, we're not sitting around in our classrooms in chairs for ninety minutes, which may have been communicated on that original chart, because now we're saying, no, spend that amount of time, but that doesn't be seat time. We'd like to provide a negotiations update, that's also, we do not have a contract, and at the last meeting, we did bargain, continued to bargain last year, this, in June, the bargaining sessions became open, so the public could attend. You can find on our website, the board asked for the transparency of it, asked for them to be open on the website, you can gather the information about where we are. Member Marsett requested this sheet to be made on the facts, this can also be found online. The difference between the request, and I, and I understand that the request presently on the table is for maybe overtime increases to the COLA not being met, the cost of living with inflation. While increases to education may have been made in the past, a lot of the items such as healthcare and benefits took up the majority of that, so money did not go in teachers' pockets. And so, there's a request for, presently, it's fifty-four million dollars, a request over three years of an increase. The board has taken the state money. This year, it was twenty million additional statewide, about five million for ASD, as well as next year on the table, but still has to be approved, is thirty million statewide. We would get a little, be a little over ninety and a half million, a little under ten million next year. The board has put that money on the table, plus some, to be able to settle, it just isn't enough, and so we are going... And so we are going to mediation. We're looking at the beginning of October, still settling on a time, and we always look to settle our contract. We want our teachers to feel valued in the classroom. We want, this isn't really any good for anyone, and I believe our board can speak to that more, but at this point in time, the difference, the outcome would be less people. Administration did receive increases, that's been in the paper. Administration eliminated positions, plus had a balance to be able to give. The board said, yes, we can give, you know, bring rates up to speed, but you have to use the money that you already have, no increase. The same direction could be given for educators, like, but if that was the case, our classrooms would, the student population would just grow increasingly. Because the teachers are such a big part of the overall operation, and as they should be. So we're doing our best not to eliminate teachers, not to increase class sizes, not to eliminate courses for kids. But the, what's on the table at the state, plus taking out of savings, is still a big way off from the assignment.
So could I ask, even there was a, there's a lot of talk, and they eventually did pass this state legislature forward funding for education for two years. And, you know, here you talk about potential BSA changes in 19, 20, 21. Was that part of, did they, did they schedule two years worth of BSA increases or not increases? And how was that out stepped by what you think you need?
Okay, so the, that isn't near enough. So the BSA increase for this year was 20 million statewide, 5 million in Anchorage.
So can I just add, you panel, Forrest, it's not a BSA increase, it's outside of the BSA, it's a one-time increase, but it's being allocated as though it were being distributed to BSA.
So once that's done...
And these, they only approved a one-year, they only forward funded for one year, not for two years.
Oh, okay.
They have the 30 million on the table to be done, and it isn't available, it just, the legislature going back has to approve it. But it's on the table, it'll be depending, just hard pressed to, I mean, our budget and what we said we would negotiate, that was built into it. The board approved spending that money, that we don't really know that we have next year, but we're thinking it's pretty positive to go through.
So it was this year and next year, not next year and the year following? And so if you were to, I'm still trying to understand exactly the size of the gap here.
Jim, would you like to include?
Forrest, look on the back, the BSA increase versus AEA proposal.
Yeah, I see that, it's a little bit difficult to, I was hoping somebody might be able to sum this up a little bit easier than that.
I can talk to you through, real quick, the AEA proposal, a little over a third of it, over three years, just over 17 million was increasing our contribution towards their health insurance fund. The rest of it was predominantly salaries. So the first year, they requested about a 6% overall contract growth, the actual per salary was a little over 3%, so it cost $20.7 million. And the important thing to remember in year one is we're already in year one. Today, we're in year one and it started on 1 July. So the state gave us 5 million extra at the end of May, beginning of June. The board directed half of that to go towards hiring 25 teachers back that we had cut during the budget process. That left about 2.5 million left. So the real gap is the 2.5 million we had left and the 20 million that AEA is asking for. So that, that gap is somewhere we, we currently can't find a path forward to meet that gap.
Jim, I just wanted to say that 25 teachers were above and beyond the number of teachers that were reduced to conform with the reduction in students. So it was, we reduced the number of instructors pursuant to the reduction in the number of students, that would have held class size status quo, but then we had to go another 25, and so to balance the budget. So the 25 the board voted to restore, just get us back to where we would be with class sizes from last year.
And there were, number dollars, great, 26 additional teachers that were reduced, but it was due to student enrollment lowering.
And can I also add that, you know, the other thing you have to keep in mind as we're talking about is that we already have a structural gap of 13 million a year when we're flat-funging. So what Jim's talking about is over and above the 13 million structural deficit that we had.
So what makes this problematic is the $20 million increase for year one, it automatically continues for year two and year three. So we're, I mean, that pay raise, it's permanent if you give the salary increase. So that salary increase now is that additional percent, and then on year two, there's another salary increase request and a little more healthcare increase request, and that carries over for year two and year three. And right now, we have the 5 million, of half of which we've spent this year, 2.5 million still unallocated. And then next year, we believe we're going to get around $10 million from the state based off the $30 million one-time funding, but neither one of those are permanent changes to the base student allocation. So, you know, anytime you start committing to permanent increases that are going to last for years and years and years, and the state is still at a point where, you know, in their minds, we're still at last year's BSA with a little bit extra money this year, a little bit money next year, but they never really fixed that gap. We're really still getting the same amount per student as we got three years ago. So these one-time things really are one-time, and it's difficult to use all of them for a multi-year commitment.
Thank you. Mr. Dyson, you had a question?
Yeah, and Dr. Bishop, the classic ways of measuring compensation benefits opportunity is what's happening with the turnover rate? And when you have a vacancy, is there a line of qualified folk standing outside the door? Would you comment a bit on both?
Sure. Anchorage is a little bit of an anomaly, because any, in any general sense, we're a place that sucks around the road system for other Alaska teachers. So we don't have as much trouble as others, but presently, we're, our trend hasn't changed, but right now, I think there's a tipping point in the state. Our state, you know, opted out of social security in the 70s. Well, when the retirement for teachers changed to define contribution not benefit, and there isn't any social security, really, our teachers across the country are disadvantaged. So if they work for five years, then they could be vested in, they have a decision, take your money and leave and go somewhere else or stay, and that's starting to affect because there's 4,000, there's 8,000 teachers statewide, we have 3,200 of them, but they're, they're leaving. So we are finding that teachers are having a choice, and it's not necessarily salary right now, it's really more in those benefits specifically because of the contribution. And it was something our state, we know, can't go back to because we couldn't afford, but putting in social security or something else to entice people to stay longer is probably something our state needs to start looking at. Because for specialized jobs, just like around the country, we're struggling for specialized positions.
Yeah, so you're giving me more information than I wanted, but valuable. So is our turnover rate twice what it was 10 years ago?
Not twice what it was, it is stable, it's stable right now.
Okay, all right. And I assume that there are lots of highly qualified people would like to have a good job?
Not, no. Our pool of candidates went from about 800 to about 200. So no, the pool of...
All right, thank you. Good answers.
Thank you. Mr. Trainee?
Doctor, how many teachers we lose last year? What would defeat retired, do you know?
I can ask, about 250, it was right on schedules the year before, but Todd has, can speak to how many retired, how many...
We're closer to 275.
275. And between 250 and 300 is our mean. I mean, that's what I'm hoping.
Are we friendly of teachers, American teachers, are we going overseas down here teachers and bringing them into this country? For a while, the schools are going to Philippines and helping those people come in here to teach. Are we still doing that or are we getting, you know, US citizens to teach here?
We do for our immersion programs, assist with visas to get particular, like our Chinese immersion and Japanese immersion. We do have teachers from other countries come into some of those positions, only can't find qualified people here. But we're, the goal is to find our teachers in our neighborhood that own home, I mean, teachers that are here, stay here and have the roots here, and so they'll have longevity of families. So we do, I don't want to say that we don't do that, but we don't, when we're low, we go to job fairs in places that have excess that don't have as many jobs as they do candidates. So we want to go to, what we, we do for special education, for occupational therapy, anything specialized, we have to go outside of Alaska for, because our own universities don't even have that degree. But for general education, for master's teachers in biology, science, things like that, we look right here at home.
Are we getting enough spending, people putting to be spent teachers?
Not at all.
That was a big deficit for a long time, it still is?
It is, and it's not just in Alaskans and Anchorage and Alaskans across the country. However, UAA with their new pathways is putting back in, because they stopped having a degree, an undergraduate degree for special education, they're going to put that undergraduate degree back in.
Thank you. Mr. Holman, did you have a question or comment?
I was just going to comment to some of them, Dr. Dyson, it's a little bit of an anecdote, but there is a teacher high-end fair put on by the university every year. I went in 1993, it occupied the whole ballroom of the Cook, it was a very busy place, a lot of places had lines, piles of resumes. I stopped by three years ago and it occupies a portion of the ballroom. 30 or 40 applicants, I would say, were milling about, and the HR departments that were there had a lot of spare time to chat with people and things. It has changed dramatically, and I think the part that's unseen is the quality changes with that. You have fewer people to choose from, and it's not the same people.
Thank you.
Mr. Pearson, were you in the...
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I was just going to say, we're still recruiting teachers from the lower 48 states.
Absolutely. The entire state. 70% of the teachers in Alaska come from somewhere else besides Alaska.
Let's go forward here. Is there any further comments or questions on negotiations? If not, maybe some closing remarks, then we'll go on to, I'm really curious about the next topic, start time.
Okay, start time, it is. Our present start times, Mr. Chair, are three, we have a three-tier busing system, and that's important to know because we use the same buses three times to take children to school. School start times presently are 7:30 for high school, middle school's 8:15, elementary is at 9:00. This whole issue came about from students going to the board with a petition, 5,400 of them, two years ago, my very first year that I was on board, and the board president had it as a goal, a task to do, and I put it off, saying this is a big job, this is going to disrupt everyone. This is a big deal, because I had done it in a prior district. It's just a big deal, because your traffic patterns, your daycare patterns, everything is affected by schools. So I suggested that we get assistance from an expert. We used leftover funds from two years prior that were budgeted for a business process review. We accessed those funds to bring up a gentleman, you met him, Shannon Mingham. He's done this across the country. Over last year, we had surveys, and really, there's been probably 15 meetings now all the way around to data source this information, so that if the board was provided information to either decide to make a change or not. The proposals went from, there were seven at first, but then we went down to a couple more, and it was current plus 30 minutes, which still could be an option if folks wanted to be elementary, high, and then middle, was changed. And then, so elementary was at the beginning, or move them last, but the one came out at the school board meeting in June, when they took the feedback from the community and had all the data and looked at it and said, well, elementary was the significant crisis. Because what the researcher, the gentleman found was that Anchorage compared to other like cities really doesn't have very many after-school, before-school programs that are run citywide. So, such as boys and girls clubs, campfire girls, things like that, the why. In other major diverse cities like ours, large, those are ubiquitous in every school, and they're not here. So the struggle that parents shared about our working parents, who I have to have my kid here, I have to have my kid here, I need someone to watch my child after school because I can't afford. So those were really real issues. And so what came up was, we have to understand research, we have to do something for high schoolers. It is blatant, it's open, what can we do? So the idea was move high schoolers up, try not to change elementary as much, which they would just move 15 minutes earlier, and then move middle school to the latter slot. The data on the middle school, and that's what everybody says, well, why did you do that to middle school? The data on middle school is that they aren't the ones working who need jobs like the high school, and consequently, they are the ones that are the most peculiar in getting themselves in trouble when not in an activity. So that age group is low for stickity, and so having them in school longer to not have as much gap between when their parents come home was an option. They also were kids who can get themselves up. It was cautious for elementary to go the late, because parents would leave for work and then their elementary school kids wouldn't get to the bus. Middle school kids are more independent, they can get themselves to the bus stop, as well as there was a proposal to, at each middle school, be able to have a morning time that if parents had to drop their kids off, there was a dinner ride to bus, that we would have an activity time, an extra reading time, a homework time, something like that, and the cost was minimal to that. So those were the proposals. We went back out to the community, because the community hadn't heard those. We had three meetings, one in Eagle River, one at Lake Otis, and one at South. Primarily, teachers showed up, and they were primarily middle school teachers, that were unhappy about, really, contract, I mean, basically, everything. They just shared, we don't have a contract, we're working on it. So it really wasn't about this necessarily, but the feedback is that it's going to be toughest for middle school. It's the biggest change, so it would be the toughest change. And high schoolers testified at those meetings, all three meetings, saying, yes, please do this, this would help me. Basically, the idea was to just get it out there in the community, so that there's no surprises. We're trying to be as transparent as possible, the decision isn't going to be easy, but now we have the information we need to make it. And that's where we are, and the board might want to add...
Mr. Weddleton, and then...
On my way, let's see what they say.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Matt, I was going to go...
Yeah, I just want to say that I think other board members would share this, but probably the emails we are getting are about 50/50. So there is no big, we're not getting a lot from one or the other, it really is 50/50 on what we're getting. So it is going to be a tough decision. What I wish we could do, but it costs us about $10 million, so if we could have middle school and high school start at the same time, that would be the optimal, and have them start later, but we don't have the $10 million for the busing.
Perfect, intro into the slide. We cost it out because of the busing, the investment, not only in the buses, but the ongoing investment of people who drive the buses, it's significant, because as many regular route buses we have, we have special education buses, and those are huge costs to that. So we did study that to emerge routes, because as you know, not very many high school kids ride a bus.
Ms. Silver, do you have a question?
Yeah, just to clarify, it's not just the money on the buses, it's also being able to find people to take those jobs. So even if you have the $10 million, we already struggle fighting that kind of hurried schedule, so the reason, and we'll present, you know, we have this third proposal, but if, the board will consider all options that are voted, not, might not be...
Mr. Weddleton, do you have a question?
I guess, two things, one is, and that was helpful to hear about the emails, but, you know, I've gone to some of these school district meetings, and it is mostly teachers there, but did you have a lot of, just parents as well?
We did at the prior meetings, there were, those were mostly by parents. Like I attended a couple at Romig, and I think, were you guys there at that Romig? So they were just located, tried to differ, when we were sharing it initially, the proposals that had people go, share their concerns, the open houses, we called them, and lots of parents, but we also sat down with Boys and Girls Club. We not only had a focus group of students, we had a focus group of those community providers, but overwhelmingly... but overwhelmingly, elementary parents, that was the loud cry of the why not to do it. It was why not to move elementary to seven thirty or to nine thirty was that it was such a hardship on them for financially because of adjusting daycare as well as just figuring it out. And when you're two parent working and we just put one more stressor on you, that's what it was. But by the same token, kids came out, kids telling us, we've changed, this would help me, so.
So, in my understanding on this, it was all really started because high schoolers like to sleep in, so you give them thirty more minutes. When I was in high school, that didn't count, but I needed two hours.
Well, I mean, not to sleep in, basically you know brain research, when you change from a young adolescent and your body changes, your brain function actually changes. I mean, it's really grounded in science, it's very sound, doctors and, so literally, all the doctors around town now are weighing in saying, you're crazy if you don't do this.
Thirty minutes, is that enough?
What's that?
Just thirty minutes?
It's not, but what we did was say, we can't just do nothing, but what do we do with elementary? If we can't afford the best, what do you make adjustments? And that is a question from the community saying, we did get some of those, if you're not going to change it to two hours later or an hour and a half later, don't do it. The research says eight thirty is the prime, prime, prime time, no one should start before eight thirty is what they say, but somebody has to or else school would start at ten. I mean, we don't have a one-tiered buses or two, it is cost driven.
Ms. Silver.
And Mr. Anderson, just to clarify, this is the only thing we'll be voting on, so it could still be elementary, middle school, high school, or elementary, high school, middle school, all starting at eight AM or later, which does give the high school a significant gain because of the huge effect it would have on our community. My position is that we would need to have significant results coming.
Yeah, I'll just say before we move on from this, I really appreciate that you are tackling this, it's something we've been talking about, I know, maybe not in this forum, but other places for years, and as you said, Dr. Bishop, there's just a mountain of evidence that it's really detrimental to student learning to start high schoolers this early. And the brief time I did education policy back in the day at DC Public Schools, it was just, there was so much evidence, it was sort of like, one of the best predictors of student success was whether or not they had a television in their bedroom, and if they had one, it was a huge detriment because it was taking up so much of their sleep. So I appreciate that you're dealing with a really emotional issue and you are working with parents that really care about this, but I want to just commend you for at least moving in that direction and taking that, making that hard decision. It's your decision, not ours, but it's, again, it's just, there's just so much evidence that improves student outcomes and if that's what we really care about, then we have to look to make these start times later for high school students.
Of course, we will see the impact when we do the budget, because we're going to have YMCA coming asking for money, we're going to have Campfire coming asking for money to expand the program, so we're going to see the result of that as we get our budget sessions through.
There's no question, everything is connected. Ms. Mitchell?
And you know what, that's a good point, but that's not necessarily true because if in some cases we eliminate before school and just have after-school, and elementary were to move to the first position, then you know, it may be that it's just cost drifting to after-school only and not before-school, so.
And we'll see.
It kind of remains to be seen now.
Ms. Marsette?
One of the things that I think we have to take into consideration, there's no doubt that it's beneficial medically for high school students. We have, in the comparisons that was done in the study, we have actually a larger socioeconomic lower level than the schools that were studied, so it has a bigger impact on us as far as childcare and that sort of thing. And I realize that this is, so I think one of the things we have to think about is when you put a hardship on the families, it does affect the children coming to school.
All right.
But change is hard and we adjust, right, too? So it's both, that's the teeter totter of the whole thing about what to do. Wanted to share also, crisis communication, this call was taken from me, but really it's not me, it's our entire school board, that safety is our priority. As you know, we started the very first day of school with a reported incident in regard to Diamond High School football team trip. Wanted to share that we immediately involved the Anchorage Department, literally within minutes, because they're right in our schools, they took it from there. The information was being investigated by them the first day, so we didn't have any information. It was just an incident of hazing that was reported. We obviously have since learned quite serious, and however, it is now at the seat of the special prosecutor, so we still don't have charges, so we still cannot comment. We, students were disciplined according to our policy and school policy as well as three coaches being removed. Diamond High School football was shut down for a couple of weeks. We did work with the families of the students, put in some professional development, some training for kids as well as adults, not only at Diamond, but ubiquitously across the district. And we didn't find that it was a culture at that particular school, it was many students that generated this issue and so I believe that's all we can say right now until, you know, and I know that this has frustrated the community, but just wanted to share, and there's so many lawyers in the room, I probably don't have to share with this group. FERPA is the Family Education Privacy or Rights Privacy Act, FERPA. If you want to, if you know something similar, it's like HEPA, you can't disclose student privacy information, it's illegal. Also, we have, you know, employee, you're an employer as well, we have employees or employee rights. We have to balance that with our community's right to know and we've been trying to do so as much as we can, but certainly in this instantaneous world right here, information gets out that actually isn't true. One of those things that came out the first day was that it was seniors, not one senior was involved in this incident. It took us two weeks to be able to say that, to complete our investigation. So just wanted to share that we are doing our best, working through this. Additionally, I, do you want me to share about the contract? Yeah, okay. So we did engage with Strategies 360, anytime, and I, we're really probably speaking to the choir within the municipality, but anytime that there could be potential litigation, we have counsel. Our counsel recommended that we use communications, some crisis communication in this situation because this is out of the norm of what our communication is just every day. And we called our insurer, our gap insurance, and sure enough, we have coverage. It took us over ten days to get the adjuster to write that in writing. We have fifty thousand dollars for communication and two hundred fifty thousand dollars for counsel. We have offered counseling, outside counseling, not school counseling, to any victims and we're working through these processes. But it is a function of our insurance, it's a normal occurrence, our, you know, it's insurance we already had, so we used our resources to work through this issue.
Any questions on this? Okay, please continue.
Last is, last night, new opportunities in ASD, there's so many great things happening and that's why we want you, want to share. Great things are happening and these new opportunities were either, I don't want to say moneymakers because we don't make money, were revenue generators or pay for themselves. Now, one of these items took from another area. So we began, turned King Tech High School, King Career Center to King Tech High School. It still functions as a part-time capstone program for kids who want to go to their neighborhood school, but also take a pathway, maybe for a third-party certificate, but we now have over two hundred fifty full-time students there that, it's a school, an official school now, so it generates its own money to be able to do that. The school is testing out this year that every student in the school, and we want to move this to every high school student in Anchorage within the next five years, does a six-week internship, because we know that content isn't enough, we need to learn to do something and so kids will have opportunities. The policy and the program is being worked out right now with the two hundred fifty kids at this school, where they would move from job shadowing all the way into a full-time six-week internship. And again, within five years, we hope to bring you back news that that will be nationwide an opportunity. Alaska Middle College expansion, we started with a hundred, about a hundred thirty-five kids at Eagle River Campus, they're still there. We also have a program, because it's growing here at UAA, so they can attend UAA on campus, it's for juniors and seniors who want that. They passed the actuator as well as Alex, which is the math, English score. They're college-ready, we want to prove to colleges that kids come college-ready. We also use these programs as scout and spies to find out what is it that we can learn when kids aren't college-ready, how can we revamp our programs to help.
Mr. Trainee?
I'm teaching at the Eagle River Campus, pre-UAA, and half my students are high school kids, they're very good students. What's odd is, they're giving their books by the university. Normally when I go the first day, I tell them I have to buy a hundred twenty-dollar book, they bought the books in for the students. Only problem was, I had one student that's twenty-seven, he says, I feel I place in this class because I'm old. But it's working well, they're wonderful students.
Well, thank you, thank you. And because we call this school, the money generated by the BSA is able to pay for the tuition and books and that's one of the, in our MOA, that's one of the provisions. So it's a very cost-effective way, but it's not a program for everyone. I've shared before, I tried to get one of my kids into it and she said to me, why are you trying to get me to leave my high school? I love my high school. And so we just want to have everyone to love their high school where they go, but it all doesn't have to look the same. And then finally, Padilla, which is, was a charter school, is now a cooperative school with the district, we have statewide correspondence now, district-wide. We did some investments with Padilla and they're partnering with high schools so that empowering the and, you can have a high school, neighborhood high school and some type of homeschool. So we're partnering those together and that's Padilla. And then the UPIC immersion college gate was a grant, the first full immersion school in the state of Alaska for UPIC language and principal is doing well, it's a highlight, it's been on the news. We're very proud of that program, but it's just kindergarten this year and we'll move grade level to grade level all the way up to twelve grades. And we wanted to just share that. Another good thing was the Eyes Closed Project, our partnership with the Anchorage municipality as well as, to put that plug in, that was a good project that we supported.
What is this?
Oh, the Eyes Closed Project is a project that is lots of different foundations, the Raffelson, the Library Foundation, as well as the museum, the municipality partnered and the, the gal in the back is Shirley, I forget that gal in the front stage, Gabriella, they came to us two years ago to ask for support to get into classrooms, to talk to our immigrant students, to tell their story. And so these placards are around the city of Anchorage, telling the story through a child's eyes about their experience as an immigrant coming here. So they worked, had access to kids in our schools, of course, with parent permission and we opened our schools up and I believe last week was the grand opening and the ribbons were cut, so pretty neat, quite a few opened, if you want to see them in one place by the museum, it was quite a bit.
Great, thank you. All right, so I think that's all of the hot topics, right? We're moving on now to capital efficiency update.
And we'll be brief as well, we have Tom Rock representing the school board.
Thanks, Dr. Bishop, through the chair. Good morning, my name is Tom Rock, I'm the chief operating officer for the Anchorage School District. For the next couple of moments, I'm going to provide an information brief to both the board and the assembly members on recommendations that are going to come forward through the board. I'll start by saying that this is not new information to the board members, but it has not been presented to the school board in a public meeting for deliberation and to provide decisions. So this is the agenda I'm going to follow, to be sure, I will stop periodically for any questions or comments, but at any time, please, please do, please ask questions. So I'll launch right into it. The first, the first recommendation coming forward from the administration will be to consolidate from three elementary schools on the Elmandorf side of Jay Bear to two. Currently, we have a population enrollment matter at the base in that we are collectively below fifty percent enrollment against the capacity within those three schools. By consolidating to two, we will see not, not getting up to ninety percent level, but we'll be getting to a place where there will be some improvements and I'll come back to the, some of the analysis here in a moment. But upfront, the recommendation will be that we close Mount Spur and that we transfer those students and staff to the remaining schools, Orion and Aurora Elementary School. And over time, similar to what we did with Mount Illiana, the base owns the land, the city owns the building, we will transfer property title back to Nick Morris Department. So to answer a little bit of the why, we're making this recommendation, this really comes down to an educational delivery improvement and in short, what this will allow the district to do is by merging, merging these programs from Mount Spur, you get more students, more staff. There are a couple of, couple of outcomes from that. First, you mitigate your likelihood of having combination classes, you have more students by grade. Also, within grades, you have more teachers, so that opportunity to collaborate and support one another and you give parents options. And then, and then lastly, by having more students in these schools, what that allows is for those schools to have specialty staff assigned to those schools, so music, art, PE, instead of having part-time teachers, they'll have full-time teachers assigned to those programs, so that's, that's the educational advantage. So to answer, you can go down to the next one, why Mount Spur is supposed to be one of the two schools? Well, it frankly comes down to accomplishments. So it comes down to capacity, in short, Mount Spur is the smaller school that we have in the base and the numbers of classrooms in Aurora and Orion will allow for, if there's any future expansion on the base because those are populations that change over time, that it will allow for those schools to accept or to expand that potential student increase. Also, Orion houses the district's fine arts department and it's also where the district stores its instruments in the basement. So I'll pause for any questions on this recommendation.
Mr. Weddleton?
It sounds mathematically just fine, but people go crazy when you close their elementary schools, is that true on the base? I mean, it's a little different dynamic.
Through the chair, that's a great question. Upfront, we, the staff has been working closely with the base staff, they, similar to in my comments earlier about socializing this, they are waiting on our timeline, so they've not really communicated this with people. A couple of comments on your observation, to be sure, we want to be sensitive to the needs of the families and the students and we're going to recommend that this be implemented, not this year, but the next academic year. So working with the base leadership, we're going to be with them, communicating, why are we doing this, what are the advantages? And I think most people will agree that just from an educational delivery standpoint, this is better, it's just the right thing to do. Not to be indifferent, also, these are, these are populations that generally rotate out every two to three years, so at some point, people may be in initial shock, people coming into the base, it will become, you know.
Can you tell me a little bit, I'm trying to picture in my head where the schools on base are, but I don't know their names. So geographically, there are three, this sounds like it's on the Elmandorf side, will there, will we be left with one on each side, the one on Richardson, one on Elmandorf, or are they all on Elmandorf?
To your question, currently, there are three elementary schools on the Elmandorf side of Jay Bear.
Okay.
There are two elementary schools on Fort Richardson.
So we're not even talking about those?
We're not even talking about the Richardson schools.
Okay.
So they're closer to the government hill, exit, all three of the schools frankly are kind of in that part of Elmandorf. The remaining schools are much closer than Mount Spur.
So for the current attendees of Mount Spur, you don't anticipate much larger travel times or much greater distances?
No, more than fifty percent of those students are bused, so they just bus to another school. It will create, there's a population of kids that are walkers from Mount Spur, they will now become bus students.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions on this?
We have a couple.
Thank you. Please continue.
So in the next recommendation coming forward, we need to replace an empty elementary school with a new facility by way of timeline. School with a new facility by way of timeline, what the administration will recommend will be that we, as part of the 2019 bond, have an amount there for planning and design, and then in 2021, we would come again to the board with a recommendation for bond funds for construction. The change would be that this would become a K-8 school with a blended learning model, and that during this window of construction, Abbott Loop as an entity, students and staff would be relocated to either a high school or an elementary school within the immediate area. Just some very quick analysis, I mean, it's an older school, original construction, 1950, it's got paged out. We recognize that there is a requirement that has been driven by the fire marshal that had integrated fire suppression system. That monies have been, were originally approved by the board for last year's capital improvement bond that the public subsequently did approve. So, in short, were this recommendation not to move forward, those monies that were approved by the public would be spent to meet the intent of that bond authority, we put in an integrated fire suppression system. If this were to move forward and get passed by the public, then it would really be at the discretion of the board whether or not that they would even exercise that bond authority. So I'll pause, any questions?
Yeah, unsurprisingly, the midtown Assembly member has a question.
So has a decision been made yet to replace the school, and what would the cost be approximately? Do we know? Keep in mind, it's 100% locally funded.
Through the chair, there is no decision. Again, this will be presented to the board, and it will be based on board guidance whether or not to move forward as a part of the bond proposition, and then it would be taxpayer...
Also to that, it's four years out when we expect the moratorium on bond debt support from the state would be reinstated. So it's on, I think 2021 is the last date from that bill. It was on a five-year hiatus where then it was 100% local. The state, well, I mean, the state's responsibility is public education in their state.
And we've known that for a long time, go ahead.
Right, so, but it's set to come back. I don't know if it'll come back at 70, 30, 60, 40, it might be 50/50, but we would, our goal is to, that these recommendations would come when the state reimbursement program is back on target.
What are we going to do in the interim before the state program is back? Are we going to every year go to the fire marshal and ask for another year forbearance?
The fire marshal's guidance to us is to address this matter no later than 2021. And if I might, to kind of continue on, Dr. Bishop has talked to him in terms of the timing of the issue.
Could I just say that that's been a moving target? That was not the date I was given when I first got on the school board. It was two years earlier than that when I first got on the school board, and so it seems to have been pushed back.
My only concern, super, is the public knows they voted, that was the vote bond to do the sprinkler system. We've got to make sure we track where the money's at, so we're not moving money around. Otherwise, public's going to go nuts, and they're going to be suspect on anything we present to them, just to let you know.
So, thank you, Mr. Trainey. Mr. Roth, if you want to finish up that, then we have Ms. LaFrance and President Marsette in the queue.
I have a question about cost. Right now, we have a rough order of magnitude estimate of this replacement school cost, and it's on the board, it's about 42.66 million. And one of the things, when we complete the design with money that we would present or propose for this fiscal 2019 bond, we'll have a much more finite number, so this is an estimate of 42.66 million.
Thank you. Ms. LaFrance?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Not to get too topic, why K through eight? And I assume they would all start at the same time?
Correct, yes. There's a desire and an interest in K-8 schools in our district from families, and really looking at a new model in regard to blended model, that one-to-one with kids, where they would, you know, do their work at school and then use at home to be instructed, you know, maybe you ever heard the flip pastor model or anything like that? So it would basically, 21st century, but any kind of a new model, but because there's just, there's interest in that, and that they could have one or two classrooms of older kids prior to moving on to high school, to offer another option.
Thank you. President Marsette?
Well, I just want to make it clear that this has been presented to the board just recently, kind of one-on-one, and so the board really hasn't had time to discuss this or even to look at this any further than what's been presented to us, so that does have to take place too.
Thank you. So I have a question, and so we on this body don't get to discuss education policy in depth as much as, obviously more as much as you do. I'm surprised to hear that you expect the bond reimbursement to come back, frankly, even if that moratorium is lifted. So my first question is, you know, how many other communities in Alaska would benefit from that? I mean, how many other communities do this kind of bonding, or are we the ones who get the primary benefit? And the reason I'm asking that is because if Anchorage is the primary person who uses, primary group that uses this kind of bonding, then I am even more skeptical that it will be returned to us, given what I expect to be severe budget pressures coming in the next several years, if you believe that the current gubernatorial candidates aren't just lying.
Right. There's about, I think there's about 18 school districts, so when the sitting governor, when he came in, he cut the contribution from the state by 25%. So at that time, about 50/50, we were paying off 50% of our bonds, and they were paying. And if you remember, when I first started, that's the first email I got in July, was that we owed $80,000 because the state of Alaska canceled it. So we used our funds, and this board used their savings to do that, because, remember, the city could not go back to taxpayers to increase, because we sold the bond for so much local, so much state. But there are about 18 school districts that suffered in that change, if you will, 18 local municipalities. There's already been, the RDEAs, which are non-incorporated areas that use 100% of state support, we already know the Casiley case sued the state and were successful, and the state not supporting its schools. And those are for schools who get nothing, they're not incorporated. So I am pretty confident, just knowing the federal constitution, as well as linking it back to the state, that there isn't, they can't stay for zero for long, because in their constitution, the first thing they do is support schools. And then they had local school boards, I mean, that was Jeffersonian times, in order to have local control, so that local people weren't down at the state. But I can't imagine, I mean, you're a lawyer, you might know more, but that's my 20-year there, and to not have it in other places, the states were sued, and the local districts were successful in suing the state in regard to capital.
Mr. Dyson? I'm sorry, I thought I saw you.
I just want to say, Dr. Bishop's right, darn it. And so are you, darn it.
Yeah, I just, the idea of predicated our long-term capital projects on the idea that we're going to win an equal protection or some other kind of lawsuit against the state doesn't seem to me like a very prudent course. And again, I am just skeptical that we're going to get it back. I hope you're right, and I'm wrong, but yeah, let's leave it at that. Ms. President Marsette and then Mr. Trainey.
I'm probably a little more skeptical, and, Dr. Bishop, of course, we'd like to have it back, but I think when we start having discussions as a board, that'll be one of the things that we'll be talking about.
Mr. Trainey?
We think of all the things the state actually requires the state to do, education, public safety are at the forefront, and they're not doing either one of them. I'm on your side for this. I don't see it happening. I'm sorry, Mr. Trainey.
Mr. Donnelly, then, Dr. Bishop?
I just want to say, one of my concerns about this proposal is putting off more work towards closing our maintenance gap, just getting roofs on the schools that are necessary. And I really appreciate the board's focus on that, the last couple bond proposals. We've really tried to reduce that backlog of things to protect our investment in these facilities, and if we put forth large replacement proposals before the voters, rather than trying to close all the gaps we've got existing, which are quite significant, I'm afraid how that's the public going to respond to.
So I had the good fortune to take a tour with Ms. Hilda of one of the elementary schools in my district, and we spoke a little bit about how this might be structured. And is the plan to put it all on one bond, or would you find a way to sort of, even if we were to go forward with this, to do it over the course of several bonds?
Yes, I mean, the plan, the proposal would be to come forward with planning and design month for the 2019 bond, and then the entire construction amount coming forward on the 2021 bond.
So 142.66 million, one bond. Would you plan to have other things on that bond?
Yes.
So you're talking a bond of $100 million?
Again, I'm a little bit reluctant to go too far on the six-year plan discussion, because it's not been socialized with the board.
What's that?
It's, Mr. Chair, it's being presented, a draft form on Monday to the board in regard to different options, and it would be up to the board to decide. But I did want to share that either way, these are our resources, right? We all get that, and they're going to, they're crumbling to remember Donnelly's thing about maintenance. But I just see the cup as half-full, because I think we can sell it. I had a board president who is running for governor, who, under his leadership, passed the highest bond ever in the state of Alaska, $240 million in one year. So, there is other information that lets us believe that this can be done.
I think that's information that should be out.
That was when bond debt reimbursement was there, though.
It was 70% reimbursement.
Okay.
So just to know, I don't see a lack of support. It has to be balanced, but I don't see, it's not all or nothing, I think there could be a compromise.
Isn't that the same person that wants to go to the boxer system for the school districts?
All right, let's not go down this road. Thank you, Mr. Trainey, thank you, Mr. Roth, for reminding me to get control of my meeting. Okay, so let's move on to, we've got another school replacement to talk about, let's talk about Inlet View.
Real quick, again, this is the same timeline, replacing the existing building constructed in 1957 with a new school building. The thing about Inlet View, the issue is, even with just the neighborhood student population, that school is too small. That population exceeds the capacity of the school to where it's supposed to block the program. So the intent would be to build a school that could meet the capacity or the demand for that school. It's also a location where the city long-range planners have looked at and are finding that there will be significant urban development in that area. It's a very vibrant location. You can see in the lower right corner is what we think is a cost estimate to do that. During the construction period, Inlet View would be relocated as an activity, a complete new supplemental school. I'll pause to answer any questions.
All right, Mr. Roth and Mr. Peterson?
Yes, so, I mean, I know this is difficult, and I struggled with it when I was on the school board, but essentially, we're taking one consolidation effort, which is just, as Mr. Weldon said, glaring, we're moving from a 48% use to a 62. We're not even getting to 80% usage through that move. And then the other two proposals you have on elementary are to spend $80 million expanding capacity. And we have, we are overbuilt in our elementary schools, but we're more dramatically overbuilt in our middle and high schools. Elementary at least gets close. And, you know, there's nothing on this proposal that does anything about the fact that we have way too much room in those other uses, in middle and high. So we're going to spend, we're going to do one consolidation, I know you're probably going to get some flak from it, but it just seems obvious that it has to be done, but it really only gives you the 62. And then we're going to spend $80 million on new schools when we have the room now. Why is that a good idea?
Using the city, and we went through this before, using the city's information, is that a lot of those buildings, the need in 10 years would come back.
Well, no, but that's looking at downtown and the projects, we've been projecting growth and density in downtown for a long time, it hasn't come true. But let's say it comes true this time, but that's just looking at Inlet View. We know system-wide, we have this overbuilt situation.
And there is a plan to change, it's really the locations of the schools, so we actually will need a school south into the future, and probably in Eagle River into the future, but the areas for which the growth is happening is not where the schools are. So there are on here, to even out involvements, some boundary changes that will start to do that, but we haven't because of the information that was presented and studied.
The boundary change doesn't change the overall overcapacity, it just moves it around.
That's correct. And so we would choose one school to shut down, and then significantly bus kids to lots of other schools. So you are breaking up your neighborhoods, you're breaking up your areas, and where was the most sense? We want to get schools to about 80, 85. We don't want them to be 99, you know, because then there is no growth. So the goal was to balance out and to ensure, if there was a school light glaringly obvious, to just shut it down, we did. In other areas, we didn't, based on the data that was really in conjunction with your folks, as well as Shannon gathered it from your folks.
Your board policy is 80 to 90% capacity system-wide, right?
That's our goal, that's what we want.
So we just spoke about Abbott Loop going through a K through eight model. Has there any talk of doing that in Central? Is Central not capable of doing that? Central Middle School is large, and I believe it's under capacity. It's close to Inlet View. Is there any talk of merging those two?
Well, certainly, the recommendation is the merger during the construction, and that could be possible, he would have continued growth. The growth that was presented is for that area into the future, with multi-housing units downtown.
Mr. Donnelly?
Good point. I raised the same point in a meeting a couple weeks ago.
But, I mean, I could see why people in that area would be very upset about that, because Inlet View is a great school, and you're just worried that they would be harmed in merging with Central, but Central, unless I'm mistaken, I'm trying to remember off the top of my head, was like...
There's plenty of room.
Yeah, radically under-enrolled right now.
We could put Inlet View in Central presently, yes.
And save 35 million bucks.
Ms. Marsette?
And remember, the board hasn't had a chance to that one yet. So this is what's being proposed to you, is what's being proposed to us, and so we haven't had a chance to discuss this or make any recommendations or anything like that. So this is just preliminary.
Yeah, it's also the case that our downtown representative, our only single downtown representative, happens to not be here, and I think he would have long ago bit my head off for this.
He's been here, sir.
Yeah, okay. Any other questions on Inlet View specifically, or we'll continue?
Mr. Peterson? Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So you mentioned the K-8 situation at Abbott. Have you done surveys with parents in the Inlet View area about switching that to a K-8 school? Or did you have the capacity essential, you don't think that's a good idea?
We haven't discussed that. And again, these are just from the Wester demographic study, we're just now getting the information, presenting it back to our board, and the board will say, you know what, go do this, and this, and this, similar to how you're doing now.
It's preliminary.
Right. We didn't, you know, open up any rain clouds and create havoc before we, you know, I mean, before, because it is emotional, people are tied to it.
Mr. Donnelly, and then, Mr. Dyson, do you have something? Okay, Mr. Donnelly and Mr. Dyson.
And just for the Assembly's information, we've had some discussions about K through eight, and our consultant has advised us that nationally, it's a national movement. The K through eight model's being adopted by a lot of school districts out there, and I'm a big fan of it personally, so.
We have some schools already that are K through eight, right? Isn't a native charter school K through eight, for example?
And Girdwood and Northern Lights, there's less transitions for students, and less transitions is a good thing.
Yeah. Mr. Dyson?
Yeah.
Viewer.
So my general feeling is, we're getting further down in the weeds on the details of these things than we should. I would, hopefully speaking to Ms. Deblosky, waive the next presentation, not of general interest, and we all try to stay on time and fast here.
Okay. Wait, isn't this in your district, though?
Yes.
Okay. All right, yeah, I'm open to that, maybe two seconds on it? I guess we can just read the slide. So they're thinking about moving the boundary.
A boundary adjustment to address what is kind of a disparate population difference between two schools, Brayley Wood and Homestead, the intent would be to correct... between two schools, Ravenwood and Homestead. The intent would be to correct some of that disparity between these two schools.
Okay. Well, good luck to our Eagle River Chugag members.
Yeah, I've already heard about this many times. So what do you guys think you might actually, can you articulate for me what you actually think is going to happen?
What has been explained or proposed is that this would be instituted not this year or the next academic year, but the following. And really the difference is transportation that currently drives these students to Ravenwood would take them to the other school, would take them to Homestead. Parents would still have the option to opt, to remain in the Ravenwood program. But, but again, this is, this is an effort really to, to right-size the populations. And for those that are familiar with this area, if you look at future urban growth, that area down by Ravenwood is all subject to near-term home building, Vyspinel and everything up Eagle River Valley, which is also bounded into Ravenwood. You know, that's a lot of people and it's a lot of people.
Thank you. So.
I just have one last comment to correct something I stated. Because this is the political season, I want to share the truth is that my board president was member Dunleavy and he did not vote to put the bond on the ballot at the borough, but his decision was that he wanted the people to decide. And in the Matu Valley, the people decided to pass the bond.
With seventy percent state subsidy.
Correct. With seventy percent state review for that, I'm a bit.
Commissary of the valley.
Sixty-two. Thirty cents on the dollar, yes.
Okay, yeah, it's state heavily subsidized the Matu. Okay, so moving on to the next thing. Oh, we have discussion or we could go to Achieve Three Thousand? We have, is that the end of the presentation, I think? Okay, great. So we're moving on now to Achieve Three Thousand, I believe, not Achieve Two Thousand.
Not Two Thousand, Three Thousand.
So who is?
My fault.
Oh, wonderful. Thank you.
Can I plug into, uh?
I'm happy to switch to you.
Oh, no, it's, oh, she said that would be best. Sorry. Well, thank you all so much for making the time for me today. I really appreciate it. We're good here.
You're not introducing yourself, I'm sorry.
Not at all. My name is Dr. Sarah Bosley and I am Regional Director with the Achieve Three Thousand in Alaska and also in Hawaii. Can I see if I can get this set up one more time? There we go. So my, my name again is Dr. Sarah Bosley, Regional Director of Achieve Three Thousand in Hawaii and happy to be here in Alaska today as well. Thank you so much for giving me the time. I know it was a tactical agenda. So I appreciate you all. A little bit of background about myself. I am nearing my twentieth year in education and I wanted to share a story with you all about a very profound experience in my twenty years. This is a middle school I taught at, Yale Intermediate in Maui. And you'll notice that if this school lays on top of a mountain, at the top of the mountain, we have our multimillion-dollar homes, our families that have been on the island for generations. They're very established. Very different value of education in those homes. And as we go down the mountain, the socioeconomic status of the families changes dramatically. At the base of the mountain, we have our jail and our homeless shelter. And I had a student in my class named Hanway. Hanway came into my class shy as anything, really small, not a lot of confidence. She struggled with the English language. And, and I share this story because I still live in this community. I used Achieve Three Thousand in my classroom many, many years ago. That's how I got involved with this company. And I don't want to attribute all of her success to Achieve Three Thousand. I want to take some credit for it too. But she, she is now an adult. I recently ran into her, this is her family's restaurant. It's about a mile away from my house. And I recently ran into this confident young woman. And it's really, you know, I see this every day because I run into my students who are now contributing members of society. They're adults. And, and it reminds me all the time, this Margaret Me quote, that our reach as educators and citizens is just so impactful and it's important to remember that. That's why I became a teacher. The genesis of me coming here today comes from this article that was in the Anchorage Daily News earlier this year. These are the results from the NAEP assessment, the National Assessment of Educational Progress. And historically low scores in reading and math. But like Dr. Bishop said, this is just a, a one data point. This is one day. So we don't want to say that this absolutely reflects the kid. But it is a good statistic to look at. And I don't want Anchorage or really anybody in this room to feel like that's an isolated incident. In fact, there is this study by the Alliance for Excellence in Education. Six million of our students are reading currently below grade level. They're struggling readers of that six million three thousand of those kiddos drop out every day. And that leaves us with five and a half million students graduating currently that are not where they need to be. And when I talk about where they need to be, there is a metric that, that we use called Lexile. I know we have educators in the room, so they may be familiar with this term. But I'm going to give you the definition that a seventh-grade middle school student recently gave me. I was visiting his classroom. In our platform, in our solution, students are aware of what their Lexile score is. And so I asked the student, do you know what that number means? And in Hawaii, our students have a different way of speaking. But he was in a social studies classroom. He pulled out his social studies textbook and he said, oh, miss, he said, my books say this thick. When I was in fifth grade, my book was this thick. And I said, perfect. It was the greatest definition for Lexile I'd ever heard. And I said, well, when you open your book, what do you notice that's different about it? Oh, miss, the sentences are longer, the words are bigger, the paragraphs are longer. And what he's talking about is how complex something is to read and understand. Our measurement, our metric, if we're using this Lexile framework, is thirteen hundred, thirteen hundred Lexiles where we want our kiddos to be. We talk about this number a lot in schools, but it really is about citizenship. Our taxes are written at a twelve sixty Lexile. State employment application is written at a fourteen ten. So we want our students to leave us at thirteen hundred so that when they graduate, they're able to be a responsible member of the community. But the reality is they're not there. This comes from a two thousand nine study. And you can see our struggling readers here top out at about a seven hundred Lexile and leave us at a seven hundred Lexile. Our run-of-the-mill kids, our middle-of-the-road kids are still not at that thirteen hundred. For the first time, this is also from a two thousand nine study, we learned that seventy-five percent of our young Americans could not join the military because they cannot pass that written test, written at an eleven hundred Lexile. And it starts very young. So this is from a Hart Reisley's research. Our students come to us in kindergarten from low-income families with a thirty million word disadvantage to their academic peers. And the result is all of those kiddos are in our class. Mr. Chair was saying something that really struck a chord with me. And it was a question about the accountability system and the PEAKS assessment. Where is the motivation for our high-level students to grow? And that's something that I believe Achieve Three Thousand does really well. So these are all students in our classes. We've got some low-level readers. We've got gifted students. We've got on-grade level readers. We've got students who haven't learned the English language yet. And that's a real challenge. But Achieve Three Thousand assesses all of that. We give our students a, a universal screener, our level set assessment. It gives us a baseline Lexile and then delivers content to students exactly where their reading level is. It's really, really neat. We've also partnered with NWEA's Measures of Academic Progress. So that data works together to deliver students their content. Educators can teach the entire class. They don't have to split them up where the high kids are over here and the low kids are over here. Now I can teach my entire class because they're gaining equity through access. They don't stay there. When they're in our platform, they're constantly being assessed through our embedded assessment and their Lexiles are changing. I told this data because I can speak to it. I've been very intimate with it for nearly twenty years, but definitely the last five years working with Achieve Three Thousand as the Regional Director. All of our students are expected to grow every year. Their Lexiles are expected to increase. This comes from Hawaii. And you'll notice that the population of students is almost exactly what we have here in Anchorage. The gray represents the expected Lexile growth. The green represents what actually happened. This is from school year twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen. And you'll notice our middle school students, in some cases, almost double their expected growth. So that's two years. Go, go ahead.
I'm sorry, ma'am. We, we have to move on our agenda. Could you summarize maybe in like two minutes? Is it possible?
Absolutely. I can do that.
Can I ask one quick question? Is this using the Matu at all?
It sure is. In fact, we just started in Matu and Ferbanks North Star. So we're working with some schools over there. I will tell you, when I was in that room yesterday, a group of leaders, I saw faces of relief in there because they have the will and the skills to make students successful. They didn't have the tool. Our tool is very, has been evolved over the last twenty years. We've developed it. We've asked questions. What I'm showing you is our career center because ultimately that's where we want our kids to get, where they can search for real-time jobs and actually apply for the jobs as well as access the content. In your folder, really quickly, I want you to know that we have been in business for twenty years. So you've got some information about our third-party studies, gold standard research, as well as our highest effect size rating for the elementary and secondary schools at E S S A, which is the Accountability. We're really proud of our rating with what works there in-house. So we're not a fly-by-night, even though we do something really amazing and it's shiny and sparkly, but we've been proven to work. I do have a three-year proposal for you all. I'll run through it really quickly because I know we're short on time. But definitely would like to finish this discussion or continue this discussion where we would support your schools with a targeted subgroup, whether that's your most vulnerable learners or, or your high, your high-level readers. But we want to reactively support you with our assessments, with our supports in curriculum, ensure accessibility is, is provided to your students, not just in school, but talking about blended learning. They have access in the community as well. Part of this, and this came up earlier, was the, the home connection. It's complimentary family licenses with every student license. And then this K two that I heard come up, we also want to be able to provide your foundational readers in kindergarten through second-grade licenses at no cost with our SmartYant program, which is a more kid-friendly version of our differentiated literacy.
So ma'am, I'm sorry, I'm going to have to stop you there.
Yes.
So I think this is a very good presentation. I think it's more appropriate to happen with probably people that control curriculum at the, at the school district itself rather than the, the, the Assembly. We, we don't directly do this kind of stuff.
Okay.
So, but thank you for coming and hopefully you'll stick around. Everybody's got your materials and they can come talk to you afterwards.
My information is in there. Thank you so much for your time. I do appreciate it. I'll be over here if, if anyone wants to connect with me after the meeting.
Thank you very much.
I would just like to clarify because I did receive a couple of texts on my phone that the school district hasn't spoken in regard to, hasn't even talked to Achieve.
No, I know.
Oh, okay. There was a couple of questions here that even from my own board saying, why did you bring this?
This is.
Not that it's like, yeah, so.
I did.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I just wanted to clarify since it's online and everything. That is, we just didn't know in the background.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, Mr. Trini asked to have this on the agenda because it was a model that apparently is being used in the Matu. So we appreciate the presentation, but we have to move on.
Okay, absolutely. No problem.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. So now we're going to go to the Iser study cost deferential. This is usually your account, Mr. Donnelly.
Well, I would defer to the former Assembly Chair because he's been champion. They appropriated the money, but you know, we went to Iser and they're trying to find somebody's state agency to sponsor this because they reduced the cost by twenty percent. And so I called Harriet Grumman. I'm waiting for her to get back to me on it. She's the House Head of Economics, the educational committee. I want to get this thing started before the money disappears. It's out there. Okay. So is, is what you're saying is we need to ask more of our state officials to see if we can sponsor, okay? We need somebody to sponsor it.
We put how much money in our budget for it?
Hundred and forty-five thousand, I think.
We put a hundred and forty-five thousand? I didn't remember.
It's the money that would cost the, for the Iser study. Because the study's not been done in twelve years. It needs to be done. So the, the base is, is relative to what reality is. It's, you know, in the Matu and here over Alaska. Some people don't want to do this. I think it needs to be done. Just see where it drops out at.
Mr. Mitchell?
So I'm just a little confused. So you guys have appropriated a hundred and forty-five thousand. Is the issue that that's not enough for the study? So we need supplemental money from the state?
That's not the issue. The issue is that Iser said we need to have a state entity sponsor this. We can transfer the money to them.
So we as a, as a municipality can't ask Iser to do a study like this?
No. They said it had to come from the state.
Okay.
I'm surprised to hear that.
Somebody to state to do this.
Mr. Weldon?
Great, thank you.
I don't lose my mind.
Yeah, no, I understand.
I don't know. It's just. So why don't we talk some after the other? Because Iser's the one that studied before and Iser's the only one that the rest of the state would consider credible. Everybody else is going to figure worth, figure a thumb on scale. I want independent study on this. Iser is the gold standard. We just got to get somebody to want, from the state to want to have this done.
Interesting. Mr. Donnelly?
And Iser's done all the previous studies also. So there'd be continuity and comparability to past studies.
Did you say some, Mr. Dyson, did you have a comment?
I disagree that no one else would have credibility. Iser is in a position because of their past stuff, excluding anyone else. I think that's wrong.
Yeah. I'm surprised if I, I mean, municipalities are instruments of the state, of the Constitution. I'm surprised that we don't count.
We don't count as far as they're.
Well, maybe, so two things then. What everybody said, if you and Starr write to them saying, will you do this? I'd like to get a clean rejection, not just hear it and, and know why. So we can break through a little bit saying, pretty pleased from the, the leaders of both the Assembly and the school board. And then if they say no, we'll know that. But at least it won't be sort of, to the extent there's some confusion on it, we can cut through it. And then if that's the deal, I think you're right. Then let's go out to other credible agencies. They're not the only one. They are one, but they're not the only one.
Does it have to be an actual state agency or could it be like a state senator's office, for example?
We don't, I don't even know if, what that is. I mean, we've just got it second-hand. Let's just see whether there is such a rule first.
Why don't you two contact them?
Let's do that.
We can, we can do that.
I used Rose and I sat down with Iser on this. We went through it.
Okay.
They can do this. We just, I don't want the money to be lost this year. It's got to be done. Money's got to be put into the pot so we can get this thing on its road.
Why don't you forward us the communications you already have with Iser so that we know who you're talking to? Okay. Any other thoughts on the cost differential, differential study?
I just want to say thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the Assembly stepping up on this issue. It's potentially very important to our community. So thank you. We're talking millions of dollars.
Thank you. Okay, so that concludes item five. Item six was shared services. I believe you put this on the agenda, Mr. Croft?
I put six and seven on, but we don't have to do it now or at the end of our meeting. I would like a presentation next time on shared services. I don't want that to drop off. It continues to be, I think, a way we can save money and act more efficiently. And so when I didn't see it on there, wanted it back, but we don't have to do it now. And the, the seven was really part of the discussion we're having at PEAKS. And then, you know, we brought in another, it seems like every time I get used to a way we're measuring how we're doing, somebody imposes or, or adds another one. And the use, the, the news is usually bad. And I don't know which ones are appropriate. I don't frankly trust the, either a federal or a state mandate on what we should do. And when I asked this as school board president, do we have the right assessment tools for our kids and do we have too many or too few? But I don't think that's true. Too many. The answer I got out of the assessment people at ASD back then, it was a different crew, was as though my question didn't make any sense. What they answered was, we're in compliance with all federal and state laws. I don't care about that. I assume you are. I want to know, are we doing the right thing? Are we measuring the right things? In our, in our opinion, are we doing too much measurement or not enough? And then we can take that and tell the state or the feds that we're going to do this. Or we can at least, you know, if we have to do that on the side for a while. But, but Senator Dyson and I, then Senator Halford, were part of a crew when the federal government said, you must take away people's hunting licenses for various things, or we're not going to give you transportation money, who finally just said, okay, no. And I don't know what would happen if we said, we're not doing your test. Give, we want our fair share of federal money, but this is insane for our kids. It's not the appropriate measure. It's not the appropriate measure. And call their bluff. Eventually on that, the transportation money, they love to use as that threat, they just backed down. Arizona joined in and others, or maybe even Arizona was before us. But anyway, they changed the rules. So compliance is one thing, but I want to, I want to understand, particularly with the rumblings I've heard from teachers that we're having to teach to the test in a tightly-bound curriculum, and you addressed some of that, that's bad enough, but it better be the right test, then. It has its own drawbacks if you're teaching to the right test. It's really a tragedy if you're teaching to the wrong test. And so I want to, I want that understanding that we as the, we might be wrong, but we're going to be wrong our own way. And we're going to figure out, this is how we want to assess how we're doing. If that isn't what the state or federal wants, I want to be part of saying, telling the state and feds to go pound.
Okay. We've got some other, we've got Ms. Marsette and then Mr. Dyson.
I just think that this would be, it's going to take us longer to answer those questions than we have today, and that this would be something that we could do at our next joint assembly.
You don't think we can do it in five minutes?
No. I would get that on the agenda for our next meeting.
Okay. I think that's a good idea, Madam President. Mr. Dyson?
Yeah. So lots of teachers in my family, and one thing I hear often is, teachers are having to spend too much time on paperwork and filling out reports and all kinds of things. And as Mr. Croft pretty well pointed out, the cost-benefit ratio of doing that as opposed to spending time with the kids is probably upside down. And I want to, I always want to, in these kind of meetings, say at the end of it, what can I do or what can we do to be helpful? One thing Mr. Croft has just done is encourage you all to look hard at these sorts of things, at things that are imposed upon your district and the teachers that don't make sense and there's not a good thing. Don't just slavishly keep on doing it. And in fact, the history is, when we tell the feds, no, with adjectives and adverbs, that they have backed down. And I think in the current national sort of political climate, we will get more support for assuming responsibilities ours and not dancing to somebody else's tune to the detriment of the kids. Sorry for preaching, but I'm hyped.
Thank you, Mr. Dyson. So Ms. Marsette, and then we have, that concludes our regular agenda. We have, if anyone has any other comments, now would be the time to do it, and then I'll adjourn the meeting.
And actually, that's what I want to move forward with, if that's okay, if there's no other discussion on that topic.
What's that? Comments?
Yes.
Oh, yeah. Go ahead, Madam President.
So I looked at our minutes from our last meeting, and we had some outstanding things here. And one of them was, I had requested that a board member be included on the Public Safety Advisory Commission, and I hadn't heard anything back on that. I know the meeting was canceled that next month. And so I know even Mrs. Debowski has requested a report from the city manager on the number of police officers and impact of a transition from a 10 to eight-hour workday. Has that been, has that happened? Okay. So I think we need to do some follow-up on these items from the last meeting.
Yeah. Well, the, I mean, that's, is there someone from the administration here? I don't know if they actually sent a representative today. They control who's appointed to the Public Safety Advisory Commission.
Okay.
Yeah. Any other comments, Madam President?
There was another one that I don't know that we met, and it was about, Mr. Trainee had requested a report on the number of student assaults on teachers for the year in elementary schools, broken out by grade level. And so I think we probably owe that to you guys.
I would appreciate it.
We said we'd send it? Okay, great. So you got that, Mr. Trainee?
No.
Oh.
I would like to get it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam President. We're just going to go down the line. Ms. Mitchell, if you have any comments?
I do not.
Thank you. Ms. Hilda?
No.
Mr. Hallman?
No.
Mr. Trainee?
No.
Mr. Wellington?
If you have someone on the board in mind to be on that commission, you might just forward that to the mayor and say, as discussed in our meeting, so-and-so would like to be on that. And then you made it quick and easy for the mayor.
It's also, it's also the case that you can certainly attend if anyone wants to. They're open to the public, and I think that would be a good starting point as well. Mr. Rivera?
Yes, I can.
Anything? Mr. Croft?
One sentence.[1621.88]